Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Welcome to the city council meeting of November seventeenth. City Clerk, could we have a preamble? Please?
This meeting is compliant with the Ralph M. Brown Act as amended by California Assembly Bill Number Three Six One, effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the public, staff, and council members while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the city council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar listed below. City council meetings can also be viewed live and on demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/brisbaneca or on Comcast Channel Twenty Seven. Our kind of video can be replayed on the city's website, brisbaneca.org/meetings. The city council will be an exclusively virtual meeting. The agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca.org at least twenty-four hours prior to a special meeting and at least seventy-two hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting and public comments received will be noted for the record during oral communications one and two or during an item. Email ipadilla@brisbaneca.org, text six two eight two one nine two nine two two, join the Zoom webinar with the ID nine nine one nine three six two eight six 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 and the passcode one two three four five six. Call the number is one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk at four one five five oh eight two one one three. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Meetings call to order at seven thirty-seven P. M. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Sorry, here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lance.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Mackin.
Here. Uh, City Attorney, could we have a report out of closed session, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In closed session, the council took up uh labor negotiations and provided direction to the negotiators. They also heard a briefing on the high-speed rail litigation matter and provide direction to council.
Thank you. Can I get a first and second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved.
Second by Lance. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin.
Aye. Moving on to awards and presentations. First item tonight is a United Against Hate Week proclamation. I'll read that proclamation. Whereas there have been an alarming increase in attacks on immigrants, Muslims, Jews, people of color, women, the unhoused, and members of the LGBTQ plus community using hatred as a means of intimidation. Whereas synagogues, churches, mosques, festivals, shopping centers, and nightclubs have all become targets of extremist groups, white supremacists, neo-Nazis, and others who promote hatred. Whereas responding to the these events, the United Against Hate Campaign was created in twenty seventeen to serve as a uniting and hopeful beacon in the Bay Area and to declare our shared commitment to diversity and inclusivity. Whereas an unprecedented celebration of cities across the country will now participate in the fifth United Against Hate Week, November thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, to raise awareness and empower residents to take action and alter the course of growing intolerance. Whereas this event is a call to recognize and stop the implicit biases that are a dangerous threat to the safety and civility of our cities. We encourage working together to restore respect and civil discourse, embracing the strength of our diversity and building a strong community based on compassion, cooperation, and common morals. Now, therefore, the Brisbane City Council proclaims November thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, as United Against Hate Week in Brisbane, reminding our citizens that an act of hate against one of us affects all of us and that every action to dispel hatred, no matter how small, is a significant step towards building an inclusive and equitable community for all. And I understand our own Caroline Chung is here and will accept the proclamation. Caroline, want to make some comments?
Yes, I would love to. Good evening, Mayor Mackin and honorable council members. It's my pleasure to accept this. I'd like to, if I could, accept this on behalf of the Idea Committee. Um, I believe it was one month of the day that Mayor Mackin had reached out to um Ingrid and myself, who helped to staff that committee, and was just wondering if we were going to be involved in United Against Hate Week when she had an email come through um from the folks at the City of Berkeley, who started this campaign in twenty seventeen. And we quickly amended the agenda for that October meeting and we got talking about what we can do in a very short timeframe, but things came together on this past Monday, on the fourteenth, we had a poetry slam and youth poetry workshop that our um nonprofit right here in town, Lyrical Opposition, had um graciously offered to host. They brought in um artists from their nonprofit and um they led fifteen youth and a few adults through an I Am poem of Mad Libs, if you will, and they filled in their poem. And in the second half of the hour, they presented their poems and um they were given instruction on how to present with confidence. And at the start of the event, I'd like to just thank Mayor Mackin for just being there to welcome everyone to that event and remind the youth that if they were experiencing any type of hate or bullying, that they would not stay silent, that they would know that this is their community and that they um have their rightful place here. And I saw a lot of heads nodding and they were getting it and they felt really empowered, I think, to um to stand up for hate and um really encouraged by um just how um the library staff was really great too and um providing our snacks and materials for the workshop. And so it was a great collaborative event. And I think being this being our first year of the Idea Committee, being involved in creating an event, um I'm hopeful that in twenty twenty-three that we'll have even more to offer to the committee during this um midweek November, um United Against Hate Week. So on behalf of the Idea Committee, thank you for um crafting this proclamation and I am very honored to receive it on behalf of them.
Thank you, Carolina. I would just like to say that that um I appreciated the invitation to open that event and the kids are the future and turning things around and they were really truly inspiring. I was inspired by them. So um I'm very hopeful and I do appreciate all the efforts of the Idea Committee. The role you have in setting the tone for how we treat each other in Brisbane is so important and I am I'm so optimistic for our future because of a lot of the efforts you're working on. So thank you again. Moving on to second item we have tonight is the Samhain County Library's annual report. I understand joining us tonight, and I'm sorry if I get the name wrong. I'll do my best. Mohini de la Peña. This is Brisbane interim branch manager. Oh, there we go.
Hi.
Ah, you are. Thank you for joining us tonight.
It is my name is Mohini de la Peña. Um, good evening, Mayor Mackin and members of the city council. Um, my name is Mohini de la Peña and I'm the Brisbane Library interim manager. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and residents of Brisbane for having me tonight. I'm pleased to present to you this evening the library's annual report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. I will share my screen. First established as a county-free library in nineteen twelve, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in nineteen ninety-nine. Covering three hundred and fifty-one square miles, our service area is comprised of our eleven member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. Samhain County Libraries is uniquely positioned to see the broader county service area while at the same time understanding each community we serve. Approximately two hundred and eighty-three thousand people live in our service area and seventy-six percent have a library card. The unique diversity and complexity of those we serve inspire and drive our services. Our communities faced another year of profound change. Through ongoing recovery efforts, Samhain County Libraries has continued to adapt physical and virtual services to meet critical needs. And staff never wavered in their commitment to provide equitable resources, programs, and services. Each of our thirteen libraries is unique, but also part of a larger family, offering transformative experiences and a single mission to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and an environment for learning. Samhain County Libraries continues to be a high-performing organization. Some standout benchmarks include a ninety-six percent favorability rating, one point six million website visitors, and over four million wireless sessions. The library system had over two million checkouts and nine hundred and thirty-five thousand library visitors. Locally, the Brisbane Library had thirty-two thousand library visitors and circulated eighty-two thousand items this past fiscal year. This was also an exciting year of events for the Brisbane Library. Hundreds of community members gathered this past October to celebrate the grand opening of the new Brisbane Library. In addition, the American Institute of Architects San Francisco awarded the Brisbane Library a twenty twenty-two People's Choice Award. During the summer, we were able to resume in-person programs to celebrate the Summer Learning Challenge. And one program we hosted was a mobile petting zoo with over two hundred children, parents, caregivers, and animal enthusiasts in attendance. Samhain County Libraries provide unmatched services to our community and we are consistently ranked as one of the best libraries in the nation. We started off twenty twenty-two with a new title, being named a five-star library for the very first time by Library Journal. We currently rank first in California and third nationwide when compared to our peer libraries. This incredible honor acknowledges our success and commitment to servicing our patrons and the value our communities place on our library services. Our staff's innovation and strong desire to serve the community led to the creation of new impactful library services this year. Each year, we make tremendous progress on our goals and it is my pleasure to highlight some of our system accomplishments. This year, we launched seven-day-a-week service and expanded evening hours at our libraries, allowing for greater success. Excuse me, greater access. We also provided vital support, including the distribution of free COVID-nineteen masks and test kits and work to address food insecurities in our communities. We successfully launched Empower Cards, new library cards designed to simplify and expand student access to library resources. We've continued to strengthen partnerships with community groups and prioritize programming that reflects the diverse backgrounds, interests, and experiences of the people we serve. Our collections are always expanding this year. The community gained access to valuable digital information and resources to help support those looking for employment, rent relief, mental health support, and so much more. Our award-winning Big Lives Inspiring Summer Camp served over nine hundred youth at eight school sites, making significant progress in advancing literacy and academic performance in our most vulnerable communities. Parent feedback continues to be overwhelmingly positive. Ninety-three percent of parents reported that their child enjoyed the program and ninety-nine percent would recommend the program to other families. Continued Measure K funding supported these programs, which includes over fifty thousand free giveaway children's books and the employment of two hundred high school and college-aged interns who gained valuable life experiences and skill. In response to families craving more in-person offerings, our staff developed a new scheme curriculum. This new program included fun educational hands-on activities for families to experience together. Through a new program with the State Library, we rolled out pre-California State Park passes insider hiking backpacks. We've expanded on the abundance of technology available to our communities from three D printers to virtual reality, coding workshops, and camera kits. The options are endless for our users to create, innovate, and learn. And our latest initiative is creating new maker and digital spaces and offering more maker programs to the community. On Saturday, June fourth, after three years of construction, the beautiful new Atherton Library opens. The library's flexible and inviting space is a perfect location for all community members to enjoy a variety of library programming and thoughtfully designed inviting spaces. After being apart for so long, there is something so special about seeing our community members coming together to enjoy our inside spaces. And I'm going to share a video, but I'm going to stop sharing just for a second so I can switch the sound so we can be able to hear it. Sorry, for a second. Sorry, folks. I'm just sorry, gonna advance it all the way to the video.
Me gusta mucho el contenido. Todo lo que hay en este lugar, los libros. Tienen muy buenos libros para leer.
I come in here for the meditation group as Monday through Friday and uh it helps me with my mental health.
Love a collection of books. Uh, especially my daughter's Spanish immersion program. There's tons of Spanish-themed books that um we don't find at other libraries or bookstores.
Because I like to play with the things inside the book. I like going.
I would like to thank library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, Friends of the Brisbane Library for their dedication and advocacy, city staff and council for your ongoing support. In particular, Mayor Mackin, City Manager Clay Holstein, and City Council Member Karen Cunningham for their work on the Library JPA Governing Board and Operations Committee. Thank you, and sorry for the technical difficulties there.
Mohini, that that video was worth waiting for, and I would just say I I really enjoyed the photograph. After all of your the the entire presentation, they were really some great photographs. And it it's pretty impressive. You've got seventy-six percent have a library card. I would not have guessed that high. I mean, that's really, that that's substantial and uh you have have truly made the library a focal point in Brisbane and I I know it it just keeps getting better. So thank you for all you do and thank you for that presentation tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Next item we have on our agenda tonight is a presentation by California Insurance Department. I'd like to welcome Lisa Strange, the Northern California Outreach Manager from the Department of Insurance. Lisa, I see you're there, but there we go. And and you probably need to unmute.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, you're coming through fine. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council members, for letting me join tonight. My name is Lisa Strange and I get to serve as the Northern California Outreach Manager in the Community Relations and Outreach Branch at the Department of Insurance. And so tonight I just wanted to give a quick update on the nation's first wildfire safety regulation to help drive down costs of homeowners insurance. So we've heard from thousands of Californians about the need to see discounts for wildfire safety and greater transparency. So we took action and I worked with the state emergency response and preparedness agencies, including Cal Fire and the Governor's Office of Emergency Services to create a consistent list of actions you can take to protect yourself from wildfires. And we call it the Safer From Wildfire Framework. The Insurance Commissioner directed insurance companies to provide discounts to consumers under this new Safer From Wildfire framework with transparency about risk rating. So the regulation requires insurance companies to submit new rates that recognize the benefit of safety measures such as upgraded roofs and windows, defensible space, and community-wide programs such as Firewise USA and the Fire Risk Reduction Community designation developed by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. So these regulations were just approved in mid-October and so insurance companies have until mid-April twenty twenty-three to submit their new rates to us for approval. So during kind of this interim time, we're urging communities and homeowners to really take advantage of this timeframe to harden their homes and communities. And so I wanted to just quickly kind of talk about the mitigation requirements. Um, that there's kind of three steps, if you will. So step one is to protect your structure, which is pretty straightforward. Um, things like a Class A fire-rated roof, enclosed eaves, et cetera. And then step two is to protect your immediate surroundings. So clear vegetation and debris from under your decks and any and all movable combustible materials from within five feet of the building being evaluated. And also remove combustible structures, sheds, and other outbuildings from the immediate surroundings of your home to at least a distance of thirty feet if you own that many feet out. Um, and then um for the purpose of this regulation, the property being evaluated should comply with Public Resources Code Section forty-two ninety-one and any applicable local ordinances governing defensible space. And then finally, step three is to obtain a community-level mitigation designation and this will most likely involve at least one, if not more, local government agency. The Firewise program is a nationwide program created by the National Fire Protection Association. And we know that California has about five hundred Firewise USA communities with more forming all the time. Um, and this is really an important part of our Calif- of California's efforts to ensure communities are prepared against wildfire. Now, currently, some insurance companies are already offering discounts for both community mitigation and/or property parcel mitigation. We do not yet know what discounts will look like until insurance companies submit new rates to us for approval. But currently, as I said, there are some that already give discounts and that um we do have a list on our website that provides those companies. And then um as I mentioned, in in addition to giving discounts, transparency was another very important benefit of this regulation. For the first time, the new regulation requires insurance companies to give you, the homeowner, your wildfire risk score for your property. And then they need to tell you how they created that score, what you know, what factors went into it, and that you have the right to appeal that score. Um, now your score must be provided to you during one of the following four times. When you apply for your new policy, before you renew the policy, before you are non-renewed, or when you complete mitigation on your property and you request a revised score. So it's important to note that you also have the right to appeal that wildfire risk score or other wildfire risk classification. And then I just wanted to quickly share about um homeowners associations because we get asked all the time, does this apply to them? And yes, this regulation includes both residential and commercial insurance lines. So the property and individual buildings within an HOA will need to be recognized for the mandatory property level mitigation factors listed in the regulation, such as clearing of vegetation, the Class A roof, and other factors specified to qualify for a discount. HOAs may also qualify for other optional wildfire mitigation effort discounts that insurance company may choose to include in its rating plan. So I just kind of wanted to share that because we do get questions, as I said, about HOAs. And I also think it's important to note um that the department expects the Fair Plan to comply with this new regulation and offer discounts for wildfire risk mitigation and structure hardening. The Fair Plan currently offers a ten percent discount on policies in participating Firewise communities. Now, we do understand that consumers are not aware of this, so please, if you fall under this category, contact your insurer and ask for that discount. So in conclusion, I just wanted to kind of summarize that these regulations, what we expect to see from them is uh more businesses, homeowners, and communities making investments in wildfire safety, greater community resilience, reduce losses from wildfires, and then more insurance companies competing for mitigated properties. And um um and more folks, more insurance companies on our list um that are providing discounts. So we expect that once on all the new rate filings have been submitted, we will be at a hundred percent, which will give people more choices for insurance. So um that's just kind of high level what I wanted to share and um if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you very much.
Uh, Councilmember Cunningham, you have a question?
I do. Um. First of all, please give the um website for people to go to to look for those discounts. That's my first question. Uh, this question might not be relevant to you, but the idea of rainbirds being those sprinklers that go on people's roofs, I think everybody knows what that means now. Um, obviously, we can't attach things like that to the local water supply because in an emergency, that water supply needs to go to our firefighters. But is there any information on your website about putting rainbirds on roofs that are then attached to our own water supply and water pumps? For example, what do we collect? For example, water we collect during the winter months that we might have our own generators to use them if a fire came by in the summer? Is that a question for you or not?
Actually, it's a great question, and I don't know that we have any information on our website about that. I do know for certain homes built after a certain year, they come with sprinklers, not the ones that do that sound, but we do have sprinklers in some of the newer homes. But I don't know about that, but I'm happy to look into it and get back to you.
I think that would be really helpful to a lot of people, because I think as we understand that we can't tap into our own water supply, alternate water supplies in our town are already really important to a lot of people. And I know Karen Kinser is here with us, and maybe that's something that she can answer offline or later on. Thank you, that's it.
Any other questions from the council? No, okay. I just would thank you, Lisa, for some really valuable information in bringing us up to date on the scores and fire hardening. That's really a major development, so really appreciate that. And we'll, maybe we can put the website in our social media or Friday Blast that goes out to our residents, so they'll know where to look for that. Thank you very much for coming tonight and explaining.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, next item we have is, I'm sorry, Oral Communications, number one. Well, City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Madam Mayor, have a raise hand for Michelle Salmon.
Okay, Michelle, two minutes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I came to your state of the city last night, and I just want to thank you for an amazing year as our mayor. You've done an incredible job, and I so appreciate the work that you've put in and the attention to detail and listening to the public. And as we look forward to what needs to be done in the coming years, I want to congratulate both Terry O'Connell and Madison Davis for their reelection. And I'm really glad that the people of Brisbane support their work and reelected them. And I would also like to remind this Brisbane, remind everyone that Brisbane was incorporated as a general law city. And as we look forward to 2023, our mayor is chosen annually by the elected mayors of the city council. It is their responsibility to choose amongst themselves who they choose to be the next mayor and lead the council forward. This is a position of trust and honor conveyed on the new mayor by the majority of the council. It is an earned position and not dictated by tradition or any preordained scheme of rotation. And I just want to remind people of that. And the council, because we're a general law city, the council has the ability to choose amongst themselves by the majority of the council who will be the next mayor. And I respect that, because it is up to them who to decide who they want to lead, who sets the agenda, who runs the meetings. And it never should be expected or schemed in advance. So I just want to thank you again for your service, and congratulations, Madison and Terry, on your reelection. And Madam Mayor, thank you for a fabulous year and all the work you've done, I'm so appreciative.
City Clerk, any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, I see no further hands, and I have not received any emails or written correspondence.
All right, thank you. We move on to the consent calendar, can I get a first and second to approve Consent Calendar Items D and E, please?
So moved.
Second. Second, I'll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lent? Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Now we go to old business. Tonight, we consider the approval of contract renewal with Granicus. Granicus, sorry, it's host compliant, and they are short-term rental monitoring and permitting. Tonight, we're going to look at the cost of renewing the service agreement through December 2022, which would be $10,682.24 for all recommended services. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As you remember, the city adopted its short-term rental ordinances in 2020. And since 2021, we've had agreements with Granicus to provide a series of services to automate the permit process, monitor short-term rental activity on multiple listing sites. It allows the city to proactively engage in code enforcement as needed and pursue the collection of TOT or transient occupancy tax. So that agreement has been in place and renewed twice previously. The current agreement ends in 2022, proposed to be extended for another 12 months through next December. Staff supportive of extending the agreement for an additional year. There's been substantial investment, training staff, and people who use the system. And we felt it's worked pretty well in the time it's been in effect. Couple trends we've had, we have approved two short-term rental permits this last year, we have a third one that's pending. And if you'll notice, the statistics and the data in the staff report indicate the number of code enforcement actions and violations have trended downward pretty significantly over the last couple of years. The proactive enforcement that the city undertakes through a grant, this Granicus contract is probably a factor that has helped reduce the amount of unpermitted short-term rentals. As the mayor pointed out, the contract amount would be 10,000, approximately $10,600. It'd be a slight reduction from last year. There's a module in the contract for a 24/7 hotline. Our experience is we don't really need that particular service, given our ability to handle that through non-emergency police dispatch services. And so we're recommending that not be part of the contract. With that, we are recommending that the council authorize the city manager to execute this agreement, and I'd like to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Cunningham, questions?
Thank you, thank you, John. Question I have is, you know, obviously, getting the short-term rental monitoring and permitting up to speed has taken some time. And there's been some people very reluctant to get their licenses. What are we going to do moving forward to not allow people to keep putting it off for whatever reason? I mean, all in all, everybody who's working from home, who has a small business license, this is no different. So what are we going to do to make sure that we are on top of these short-term rentals as small businesses like anybody else sooner rather than later?
Well, again, I think the service provides the tools for the city to undertake enforcement action. And I believe I know one particular instance you're talking about, it referenced a pending permit application. I know that has been a case where there has been a delay in their operation without a permit, but they are in the process of obtaining a permit. But again, the proactive nature of this does allow the city to not be reliant on neighbor complaints to monitor whether or not sites are being listed. And with our having a full-time code enforcement officer, which we have now, makes it a little easier to follow up on that as needed. So so I think we understand the council's priority to make sure that unpermitted short-term rentals are abated or legalized, and that is what we're aiming to do on a timely manner.
Thank you, John.
Councilmember Lent?
Thank you, John, for the update. So, you know, one of the things you just mentioned was complaints. And to me, that is the biggest reason why we hired these folks, because of all the complaints that various neighbors in town were, you know, that we were hearing from them, right? The inconvenience of some of these short-term rentals. So has that dropped significantly since we've moved forward with this contract?
Yes, it has. As of this year, there have been six complaints investigated in all of 2022. And there's only one that's resulted in an active code action. So compared to before, when we started this, there were 12 to 14 illegal listings. So again, this has dropped dramatically, and each one of those listings could generate numerous complaints over its operation. So yes, I think by order of magnitude, the number of complaints we've received about short-term rentals has decreased.
Significantly, all right, thank you so much.
Councilmember Davis?
I don't have any questions.
Councilmember O'Connell?
No questions for staff, thank you.
I have one question, were we able to, did we have code enforcement collection of fines this year?
Of the six, I don't believe that any of the complaints resulted in a citation being issued.
Okay. All right, thank you. Council discussion? Councilmember Cunningham, you want to start?
Sure, you know, I think we need to have this in place. I think we need to be a little less flexible in handing out fines. Somebody speeds through town, they get a fine. I don't think this should be any different, and at this point, every single person who has an Airbnb or other like business understands that they have a business. So I think we've been very gracious in not finding people, but I would like to see that enforced a little better than we've been doing, thank you.
Councilmember Lent?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with renewing the contract. The data shows that what we're doing is making a difference. And the amount that they're asking gets covered by TOT. And yeah, so not all of it, but you know, a good portion of it. So it just makes sense to continue with contracts.
Councilmember Davis?
I'm in agreement as well, I think if we don't, then we just open ourselves up to the exact same problem again. I think we need to have like a couple of years where we have this contract in place and then know that, you know, everyone's compliant for a while before we would, we should consider no longer having this type of enforcement at our fingertips.
Councilmember O'Connell?
I believe we should retain the service and work on getting all of the non-compliant SDRs into compliance.
And and I'll ask for your indulgence, because I actually thought of one more question. If someone is operating without a permit and they are cited, do we not have a provision that they're then prohibited from obtaining a permit for a year?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just want that caution to the wind for anyone who wants to consider operating without a permit. All right, I'll entertain a first and second to approve the contract renewal with Granicus.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted, I just wanted to note for the record that there are no. I just wanted to note for the record that there are no members of the public wishing to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that, thank you, all right. So again, Councilmember Cunningham, you want to make your motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the contract renewal with Granicus, thank you.
End of second, please.
Okay.
All right, second by Lent, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lent?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Move on to new business, tonight, we're going to consider adopting an urgency ordinance, which is adopting the 2022 California Building Standards Code with local amendments, and finding that the ordinance is categorically exempt from environmental review under Sequel Guidelines Section 15308. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Associate Planner Robbins.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, and good evening. Every three years, a new set of construction codes is published by the state. The new state codes, the 2022 edition of the California Building Standards Code, which I will refer to as the CBC, automatically becomes effective January 1, 2023. And local adoption of the CBC allows the city to enforce them under the authority of the Brisbane Municipal Code. Title 15 is where Brisbane's construction-related codes are contained. The last CBC adoption cycle was in 2019, and at the same time, the city amended other chapters within Title 15 to adopt local reach codes pertaining to fire protection, onsite energy generation, building electrification, and electric vehicle or EV charging infrastructure. This ordinance would adopt all 12 parts of the 2022 CBC, as well as the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and delete out-of-date chapters within Title 15 that have not been amended since 1978 and are already incorporated within the CBC. They include Chapters 15.08, Organization and Enforcement, 15.12, Permits and Fees, 15.16, Inspections, and 15.20, Certificates of Occupancy. In addition to adoption of the 2020 CBC, local modifications to the code are proposed. Section 17958 of the California Health and Safety Code allows local jurisdictions to make changes to the provisions within the CBC. For each local change proposed to the CBC, the city council must make findings supporting its determination that each such local change is reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, topographical, or environmental conditions. These findings are summarized in Exhibit A of Attachment A of Staff's Report. Since 2007, the city has adopted local modifications to the fire code. However, additional local amendments to other parts of the CBC are proposed this cycle due to Brisbane's heavily vegetated hillsides, narrow, steep public streets, private accessways and lots, proximity to the San Andreas Fault, exposure to strong winds, building locations immediately adjacent to protected habitat conservation areas subject to wildland fires, and noise transmission from San Francisco International Airport and Highway 101. Some of the proposed local amendments aim to address our greenhouse gas emission reduction goal established within our climate action plan as well. Along with the proposed updates, the fire code recommended by North County Fire Authority, which are for clarification and/or reorganization and do not substantively change previously adopted modifications. The most notable local modification proposed this cycle is the All Electric Building Code. I'll have more on that later. Other local modifications include adoption of specific CBC appendices and administrative updates or tweaks to reference other Brisbane Municipal Code sections. To supplement the 2020 CBC, it is proposed that the city maintain its previously adopted local modifications or reach codes to address energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emissions, as well as our local fire hazards mentioned previously. There are no new reach codes proposed this cycle, but it is recommended to delete our Onsite Energy Generation Reach Code, which is no longer relevant, and reorganize our building electrification reach code. Brisbane Municipal Code, Chapter 15.81, Onsite Energy Generation, adopted a couple cycles ago, required limited onsite solar energy generation for residential and non-residential buildings. The 2022 CBC now requires all new residential and non-residential buildings to install a new solar energy and battery storage system. State code now supersedes this reach code, and it should be removed. Brisbane Municipal Code, Chapter 15.83, Building Electrification, was adopted in 2019 and required all newly constructed residential and non-residential buildings to be all-electric with some exceptions. For example, residences could have combustion cooking appliances and fireplaces, and life science buildings and buildings that demonstrate non-electric building components are essential as a core component of the intended building use, like a barbecue-themed restaurant, were entirely exempt from the provisions of the code. New buildings are not prohibited from the use of natural gas under the 2022 CBC, while building electrification is still considered an appropriate prescriptive reach code. In addition to solar power generation, building electrification remains an important step in further reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and the provisions within this chapter exceed the requirements of the CBC. However, given the importance of eliminating gas to achieve long-term climate goals, staff believes the existing blanket exemptions are no longer warranted or appropriate. The amendments proposed generally allow gas infrastructure in new buildings only when the applicant establishes that there is not an electric prescriptive compliance pathway for the building under the California Building Energy Efficiency Standards, and that the building is not able to achieve the performance compliance standards applicable to the building under the Energy Efficiency Standards using commercially available technology and approved calculation method. If an exception were granted, the applicant would still be required to. If an exception were granted, the applicant would still be required to essentially pre-wire the building to be all-electric as a condition of approval. This language would be consistent with more recent all-electric new building reach codes adopted by cities like San Mateo, Belmont, San Carlos, and Milbrae. This ordinance would repeal Chapter 15.83, which amended the 2019 California Energy Code, or Part 6 of the CBC, and replace it with local amendments to CalGreen, which is Part 11 of the CBC. Amending CalGreen rather than the Energy Code would achieve the same outcome. All new, newly constructed residential and non-residential buildings would be required to be all-electric, while simplifying the adoption process of this reach code. The last reach code related to energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emissions is under Brisbane Municipal Code, Chapter 15.84, EV Charging Infrastructure. Also adopted last cycle, this reach code is still considered a reasonable prescriptive reach code and recommended to be retained, i.e. readopted. Moving on to other proposed amendments within this ordinance, minor changes to Brisbane Municipal Code, Chapter 15.86, EV Charging Station Permit Streamlining are necessary to address new state legislation, as well as clean up a few grammatical errors. The state passed AB 970 in 2021, which built upon AB 1236 passed in 2015, and clarifies the timeline or streamlining requirements on E, on permits for EV charging stations at existing buildings as follows. For projects with 1 to 25 stations at a single site, applications must be reviewed for completeness within five days and approved or denied within 20 days. For projects with 26 or more stations, applications must be reviewed for completeness within 10 days and approved or denied within 40 business days. Lastly, the ordinance is proposed for adoption on an urgency basis because the 2022 edition of the CBC becomes effective January 1st, 2023, and it is in the community's interest of health and safety for the city's reach code provisions to be in full force and effect at that time. This cannot be otherwise accomplished due to the City Council's December meeting schedule. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Planner Robbins. Uh, councilmember Davis, would you like to ask any questions of staff?
No questions at this.
Okay. Uh, councilmember O'Connell?
I have no questions for Associate Planner Robbins.
Councilmember Lentz?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. You know, one of the things that you, you talked about was the um, you know, eliminating the blanket exceptions for, for, uh, you know, the gas. And so, you know, um, as we start to move towards a, a, a world where we're not using natural gas anymore, are, are we still seeing applications for new construction? Wanting, wanting these exemptions or, or still being allowed to use gas uh, in their installation?
I don't have permit data, permit data on hand, but it was pretty minimal for, to include guest appliances. Um, especially in new construction, which is already kind of not, not a huge chunk of our permits.
No, it's not. I mean, every now and then, yeah, you see a vacant lot being built on. But um, so, so unless they have, you know, some kind of special need, they, they will have to install electric.
Yeah, under this proposed ordinance, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yeah, um, just further to what councilmember Lentz just said. You know, they could or not, this is where the state is sending us. So just so people under, understand we're not dreaming this up ourselves and, and forcing it on our residents. This is coming from the state. Um, I have a very minor request. Item, uh, item eight. Uh, the city regularly experiences strong winds with average velocities ranging from approximately 15 to 25 miles per hour and reaching high velocities of 50 miles per hour. Could we change that 50 miles an hour to more than or sometimes up to 70 miles an hour? I have clocked 70 miles an hour onto Larry Street, and I think 50 miles an hour, um, although it sounds pretty horrible, is not as high as our winds have gone so far, and I can only assume moving forward are going to be stronger. That's, that's my minimal request. Thank you.
I have no questions. Uh, do we have any public comments, city clerk?
Madam Mayor, there are not, there are no written correspondences, email or text messages received, and no members of the public wish to speak.
All right. Thank you. Moving to council discussion. Councilmember Davis?
Uh, I'm good with adopting this or urgency ordinance. And we do this, this is a routine thing for us to bring us into compliance with the state, and I think all of these are, you know, reasonable amendments, so um, I'm happy to proceed.
Councilmember Lentz?
Yeah, I'm ready to move forward, uh, adopting the draft.
Okay. Councilmember O'Connell?
Ready to move forward.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Same. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just add one comment that, uh, since we dealt with this, um, as a subcommittee. We are known in the county, um, especially serving on Peninsula Clean Energy, we're known because we're, we're right up in the top of, of being more aggressive in adopting reach codes, and that's a good thing. And um, in terms of diminishing the use of gas, this is really giving people a lot of time to plan ahead. So it's not really punitive. I mean, even if you had a brand-new water heater, you got a lot of years to use that water heater before it has to go away. So, and, and this is the direction we have to go. So at that point, um, I'll take a motion if we want to make a motion to, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2022 California Building Standard Code with local amendment.
All right. And a second, please.
Okay.
Second by Lentz. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Hi.
Councilmember Davis?
Hi.
Councilmember Lentz?
Hi.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Hi.
And Mayor Mackin?
Hi. Next item on the agenda, consider sending a letter recommending a federal climate emergency declaration. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Adrian Ethererton, Sustainability Manager. Um, first, let me just thank you for your approval of the reach code. As you know, this is an important step towards the climate goals laid out in our local climate emergency declaration adopted last year. That declaration serves as a clear signal that Brisbane recognizes the crisis posed by climate change and will do all we can to mitigate it, adapt to it, and bring about a just and sustainable future. The request you have before you is to ask that the federal government do the same. As President Biden came into office, he stated that his administration would bring a whole-of-government approach to addressing climate change. Indeed, a few months ago, Congress passed and the president signed the Inflation Reduction Act, which dedicates nearly 370 billion to the energy transition and represents the most significant action to date on climate in this country. The IRA is estimated to reduce emissions 40% by 2030, still falling short of the 50% reduction Biden called for and for which the science demands. There are many further actions that can be taken through executive action and through a climate emergency declaration at the federal level. The letter before you draws on reports from two respected groups to provide examples of specific actions the administration could take. It was drafted by the Climate Action Plan Subcommittee of the Open Space and Ecology Committee and recommended for your approval by the entire OSAC. Thanks for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Cunningham, you want to start?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
No question.
Councilmember O'Connell?
The questions. I think it's a great idea.
Councilmember Lentz?
Yeah, thank you, Adrian, for drafting this letter and, you know, and, and just being someone who's, or think, you know, forward-thinking and, and trying to help Brisbane, you know, be that leader in San Mateo County and, and the region in regards to sustainability. So this is an excellent letter. Thanks. And it was also great to see you at, uh, the Genentech event for Sustainable San Mateo County. Um, and it was also just to let you all know, you know, Brisbane was also recognized, you know, in that, uh, event, you know, as, as a, as a leader in sustainability. So that was cool.
Okay. I have no questions. So, um, city clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
If you're interested in making a public comment, can you please use the raised hands function? Madam Mayor, I see no raised hands at this time, and I have received no written correspondence.
All right. Thank you. Back to council discussion. Cunningham?
Let's do it.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Um, ready to proceed. I can make a motion if there's no one dying to comment.
Or you do. I have a comment. I was just gonna say that, uh, watching what's going on globally and how we're so behind on everything, I think some people will say, why would Brisbane be dealing with something that's federal? And I think the more cities that urge our president to take a stand as a country, we're one of the largest nations. We need to take this stand. I, I think it's time. So that's my comment. Anyone else wishing to comment? Nope. If not, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to send a letter recommending a federal climate emergency declaration.
Second.
Second, Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Hi.
Councilmember Davis?
Hi.
Councilmember Lentz?
Hi.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Hi.
And Mayor Mackin?
Hi. City managers report on upcoming activities. Your report, city manager, please.
Let me go ahead and share this. Let's see.
Okay, first item we have, uh, is Senior Trip, uh, Chabot College Winter Coral Concert. It's on Monday, December 12th, uh, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. You can join the Brisbane Parks and Recreation Department for a trip to Hayward to see a production of the Chabot Performing Arts Center Winter Coral Concert. The concerts will feature beautiful music of the season. Proof of vaccination may be required at the facility for entry. Van will depart City Hall at 5:00 PM. Um, it may stop on the way for, um, coffee or hot chocolate. Uh, doors open at 6:30. Concert begins at 7:00, and they will return to Brisbane after the concert. For more information, you can reach out to Nicole Houghton, um, at 415-508-2144, or N Houghton, H-O-U-G-H-T-O-N, at brisbaneca.org. Um, and you can sign up at the Recreation, Recreation Office here in City Hall, Sunrise Room, or online at the brisbaneca.org/srtrip. $15 fee. Um, the second item is our annual Festival of Light. Um, celebration will be focusing on the holidays as the season of giving and enjoying the company of each other as, as a community. The event will begin with singing from the top of Visitation Avenue to the community park. Traditions include a visit by Santa Claus and the lighting of the tree by our volunteer of the year and mayor. Event goers can also enjoy a tasty cup of hot coca and holiday cookies. We will even have an inflatable toboggan for children to slide down. It's sure to be a wonderful evening. It'll be Sunday, December 4th, 5:45 at the top of Visitation or 6:00 PM at the community, uh, park. And the first 200 participants will receive a free giveaway. And then the final item is the Brisbane Dance Workshops 12th Annual Holiday in Arts and Crafts Fair will be on Saturday, December 10th, uh, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, featuring a huge assortment of wonderful handmade items by over 30 local artists and craftspersons. Um, check our Facebook page for full event artistic details, It will be held at Mission Blue Center here in, um, Brisbane. And that's all for tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. County-wide assignments and subcommittee reports. Who would like to report out? Councilmember Lentz? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Councilmember Lentz?
All right. So, um, this morning I had a Q dot org, uh, meeting, and, uh, the item that we discussed was AB 2449. I'm sure that's something that we'll get into ourselves. That's the law that, um, you know, provides the post, um, uh, you know, Zoom meeting requirements or, you know, remote meeting requirements, um, while also staying within, uh, the Brown Act. And, um, it was a very lively discussion because there are these just causes that allow you to, for emergency reasons, allow you to, um, to be, uh, attending the meeting remotely. And they're super, super restrictive. So, um, you know, we're in a new era, right? Where not all meetings have to be in person. You know, we've, we've made these adjustments in our lives over the last couple of years where, you know, here's Karen, you know, Councilmember Cunningham in Australia, being able to attend, you know, our, our meeting tonight. She, under the new law, she would not be able to attend because it's a personal reason. If it was a city reason, okay, that's, that would work. And so, you know, there's a lot of people who have signed up for, you know, being on certain committees or commissions and where, it, you know, having the remote, uh, meetings gives them access, gives them an opportunity to participate. But if you're, you know, if you have to drive far distance to attend these meetings, and then you incorporate that into your schedule, then, then you start to limit. So, um, but, you know, right now, this is the law, the law that landed. You know, uh, Tom, I, I'm sure you can add more to what I just, uh, mentioned in regards to that new law. Um, so yeah, take it away if, if you have any more information.
Uh, I'm not, I don't want to add anything tonight. We've done a memo on it. It's in the council's file, but, um, we may read it slightly differently, but yes, it is far more restrictive. Uh, and it's, it's a result of non-city council actions. It's, it's a result of, uh, special districts and things like that, but it does impact city councils.
Okay. And that was it. That was the only thing we talked about, really.
Well, I, I thank you for bringing that up because I think it's, it's difficult to imagine what's behind that where we talk about sustainability and greenhouse gas emissions, and yet then we all get to go in the car and go drive down the peninsula to a meeting when we can have a Zoom meeting. Are, are we serious about this or not? So let's hope that, that maybe some saner minds prevail to think this through a little bit more.
Absolutely. You know, and you just mentioned, right, you know, the greenhouse gas emissions, you know, traffic and things like that. So Mutogwar is going to write a letter. We've directed staff to be the leader, um, initiating that response, uh, to the state, uh, from San Mateo County. So, but you know, you're right. Here's MTC. They, they're a regional body. They have folks from all over the place, Sonoma, down south, over in the, you know, outside the valley, and they're gonna all become to San Francisco instead of doing the meeting remotely. Yeah, it just makes sense.
We're asking everyone to get out of their cars, and yet I don't know anyone on the council that's gonna have time to get on the train for sometimes an hour and a half, though, or then ending a meeting and coming back in the middle of the night. It's just, in some ways, it's, it's not practical. So thank you for that. Uh, councilmember O'Connell, you have a report.
Thank you. Um, so I had an airport technical working group meeting where we discussed different options for making recommendations to G-Bass landing, um, for making quieter incoming flights was most of what our discussion was about. I also had a Sierra Point Park planning meeting with councilmember Lentz, and we went on a site tour of Sierra Point. We got some really interesting perspectives from the consultant on sea level rise and what that might mean to the configuration that's available to us in the next 20, 30, 40 years, and got a lot of information as far as what we would need to be looking at transitionally for that space. And I think it was a looking at transitionally for that space. And I think it was a very interesting meeting. Of course, no decisions were made, but it involved many of the other councils, or not councils, but commissions and committees where we all took in the information. So it was quite enlightening on the whole process of where our, our planning would be adding in the sea level rise and that, those kind of issues.
Yeah, and if I can just chime in, thank you for bringing that up. I forgot about the meeting. But I'm surprised I forgot about it because it was such a great meeting. And it, it was, it was actually, you know, the first meeting that I've been to in a long time where it was in person. And, you know, in that particular sense, it did make sense to have the meeting in person and to go to the site with the, the various people that represent our committees and commissions on that, that, that committee that we formed to, to go over the master planning, getting their feedback, and then going back to City Hall and and, and continuing the discussion in person. It, it, it it was really nice. And, and I have to say, I think our consulting firm that we've hired, C M G, they're top-notch in what they've put together so far to help us come up with, you know, an ultimate community-sponsored master plan is, is, I've been very impressed so far.
Can I ask what stage you're at with that planning?
Oh, we're in a way early stages. Yeah, we haven't even had a, a community, yeah. You know, eventually we're going to have a community workshop, you know, and, and really get the community's input. It's just kind of like just exploring ideas of, of various aspects of what we like. You know, and then, you know, and then eventually compiling that information to then have the community get really involved, providing directions and follow us.
Uh, I see our city manager has his hand up. Did you want to?
Yes, just since this came up, the, the consultant is working on some options to present to the larger committee. So that probably will happen in Q one of two thousand and twenty-three. And then from there, the process will work itself ultimately to the city council.
Well, I think everyone's eagerly anticipating to see the first of the ideas. I know I am. It, it, it's a wonderful space and, and I can't wait to hear what, what's come up from all the input. So thank you for that. Councilmember Davis, do you have any meetings to report on?
I don't.
Okay, Councilmember Cunningham.
Well, there was two this week, but they were at three A M. So I, I did a pass on a couple this, this time. However, every, every conversation, every meeting, every event I've been to over the last few months, that same thing comes up about AB two four four nine is that single occupancy vehicles, vehicle miles traveled. We say one thing and we do another. We need to get our, mm, together.
Yeah, it, it's come up with my Peninsula Clean Energy meetings because they used to meet in Woodside and this.
That's the farthest point in the whole county. It's practically.
It is.
Practically Palo Alto.
Right. And the C E O has, has said that because they've added so many staff, the, the building they're in is no longer available for meetings. So no one knows where the meetings are going to go now. So.
I actually made a suggestion at the Foster City Council of Cities that may or may not ever get thrown into the mix. I mean, if we're going to do these meetings and we're serious about vehicle miles traveled, maybe San Mateo County, if we're going to do in-person meetings, needs to have these meetings in the center of the county. Great for the people who live in the center. A lot less pain for those of us who live in the north, the south, or on the coast. Anyway, that was just the conversation that came up at that dinner. Just so you know.
And in that regard, isn't there a county courthouse that's no longer really being used in San Mateo that would be easily available?
No idea, but I have to tell you, the Redwood City, the new Redwood City Community Center is absolutely stunning and could handle many, many people. So we can think about that one.
Okay.
That's it.
Right. I have nothing else to report out on meetings. Moving to written communications. Did we receive any written communications, City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we received one correspondence from Susan Candle regarding the information and how the sixth cycle of RENA is setting all of our cities up to fail, and that was sent today on November seventeenth. And we also wanted to, I also wanted to share the city council meeting schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped that. I, I was so excited hearing the discussion here. Yes, our next schedule. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for December the eighth. That's a special meeting.
Let me see if you can see this. This is just wanted to remind city council members that the meeting on the first is that canceled, but we do have a special meeting for the AB one, two, three, four ethics training. And that's going to be at six o'clock. So I'll send that link to everybody as well. It looks like most I have a couple of R S V Ps, but I'll send that over as well, just so people have that in their calendar. We also are scheduling a special meeting on December eighth at eight thirty and a possible special meeting the following day if if we don't receive the certificates of election in time from the San Mateo County Elections Division. You might have to postpone some of the items until the following day until we receive those official documents. And then, of course, we have our regular meeting on December fifteenth.
I will be unavailable to attend the eighth and the ninth.
Okay, so long as we get a quorum and our city clerk will keep us apprised of what happened with that schedule. Thank you. Oral communications, number two. Any members of the public wishing to comment?
Madam Mayor, I see no raised hands and I see I have received no text messages or emails.
All right. Thank you. That being said, thank you, everyone for attending. Thank you, everyone for your input. And have a wonderful weekend. This meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-three P M.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye.